We'll have a chance to win right from the law, so.
Go get some seeds with that process.
Yeah, I can.
Yeah, I'll see him later.
That always works.
Stable?
Yeah. Stable? Yeah, stable.
Morning, Dick.
Hey, Dick.
The policy gives you services. That's what I'm doing. On that, generally, if late night. Have they presented, you know, how many years in these? I don't know.
Gentlemen.
Morning.
I looked at it earlier and didn't feel it.
Yeah, not far.
That would be information we would need.
That we would need. That would be information we would need.
I wonder. What's that? So, no, this is for, rural doesn't need. So, we've got several, so. Bill. Drive, see. Catch. Hold on. If you can, nothing to mind you. Yeah, I don't know, I saw yours. Do you want? I don't think that. Terr, do you have a plaque?
Do I have one? No, Big Boy wants to put my name before mine.
Okay. Come in. Okay. Oh, okay. Point that, I have, we're presenting input on all of your services. Except if you like.
He came in.
Very nice. Like, been Turkey Day? Oh, yeah. As, as. Proposed, I said, I don't think much.
You done, yeah?
I see. Yeah, I signed this. Is that, is it still?
I don't know, did you put it next? I remember.
Yeah. I signed it. Yeah. This is a new one. Now, is this, what was?
That was Friday's.
Yeah, I already signed it.
It's, it is a little colder.
That's where they need to be. Yeah, so there's that last. Look at nine o'clock, so you're way to open. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have an appointment for youth services. It is a high school principal from Royal Valley, Kathy Geis, would like to be put on the Juvenile Corrections Advisory Board for our district, so I'll entertain a meeting to approve that. And then, Terr, can you verify that a letter was sent to Kevin Gill in November for no longer needing his services?
I'll have to check. See, I didn't put this.
You want to check with Aaron and see, we need to make sure that that was done today? Should have been. Or that it's done already. County Attorney's Office, they had verbally spoken, but it has been asked previously for documentation that was going to bring. But it was just done. Done. Correct.
So, I will make a motion that we approve the appointment of Kathy Geis to the Ward of Youth Services in the Second official district.
Second. Good move to the second, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Yeah, Kevin Gill, termination of services.
Yeah, but in the contract, I got that email and I didn't remember. Yeah, signed it, it's late.
Yeah. What date are we doing? I think it was thirty day notice, and I think we started like ninety days prior, if I thought a hundred or something.
Yeah, well, I just, I had it to you, if you guys know, I thought it was done.
Yeah. It was a letter that you penned?
Yeah, or, or, it was like, acted like a, it wasn't a letter, it was just a termination.
And I just, I just want to verify that that was done.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I did it, sent it on, but I thought it was a copy, so, but they don't have it.
You sent it, though.
Well, I didn't send it, I didn't send it.
You sent it up to the clerk's office.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah.
Let me check. That's what I called. Or sent to the attorney.
This is, I believe the change in verbiage on this is going to be the, this part that's highlighted about cancellation after, within thirty days of reservation. That approved? Yeah.
Mr. Drew, I, I sent whatever the document was, I don't have it in this old email, but I sent it on October first. So, it was to Amy. Clerk, and you got it, so, we take, everybody, just take a look around, see where that is. That's, I think I put for your signature. I put it for your signature, I believe.
So, I don't believe, I haven't, just sent it just to Jared?
Yeah, I just want to give Jared's.
That would have come down.
I don't think there was a need to have you guys all agree.
Sure. Right. We, we just need to verify that that was sent.
I called Aaron, she's going to see what she can do.
Okay, thanks. Um, next letter, uh, you're still, sorry.
No, I.
You want to? I'm almost done with it. Okay. Just simple letter of resignation from Tim Levens for his services with the county. So, motion to accept his resignation. So, move.
Second.
Move to the second, accept Tim Levens' resignation of services for, um, the IT services that he provided. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Dick, come on in.
Morning, Dick. Good morning.
How are you?
Good.
Come on out.
Second.
Yeah, yeah.
You may know, this county attorney, I had a number of interns. We all turned out to be very successful, not because of me, but because I chose to repeat. And in lieu of my retirement, they're doing a plaque that they're all going to sign. And I talked with the judge, we'd like to hang it somewhere in the courtroom facility.
Yeah.
Probably in clerk's office, but I understand I need your permission to do that, because this is your bill.
Right. And I think it would be a general consensus of this group that we would honor to have that hanging. Anywhere you would like to, in courtroom, or in the clerk's office, wherever you choose that.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Yeah. We appreciate your, your service to the county for all the years and just, just being a good friend to the, the county and offering up advice and all those things, so. Thank you very much.
Congratulations, what does it mean?
Yeah.
Congratulations. Congratulations getting there.
Yeah.
I just had another case out in January, so it's been put off just a little over.
Yep.
Thank you.
See you, Dick. See ya. Good morning. How are you?
Good.
He has a retirement party on the nineteenth, right, Dick, you and Judge Collins are going to have a little gathering here at courthouse on the nineteenth, is that correct?
Is that.
You have a gathering on the nineteenth?
Yeah, and some of those interns will be there.
Okay.
Kevin will be there, for sure.
Two to four? Did I read?
You know that one, huh? I'm sure I have it in my calendar.
Yeah, I've got time, I can inform the guys. Yeah. I've been hired. I have to be wide operator. Which is the mayor there. So, the other, the kid that he thought maybe would go down there and decided he didn't. Now, if you want to stay worried about. This guy got experience? A little bit. A little bit? Yeah. Bob's, Bob, uh, loved and drank, but it's our thing. Yeah. Here it is. Send this stuff from last week and this week.
I talked to Matt Watkins, who's in control over here at the KOC in Portland.
Yeah.
We discussed about our work we're going down here to, uh, sort of the slab for the fuel system.
Right.
And it says where we're doing, so we will be, we will be, okay. Right now, uh, it's, he's here, he's in, politician, they're not changing, he says, but right now, he says, design wise, considering what they're forming, which is our design.
Which.
And also, yes, you know, it's a year.
Yeah.
Anyway, he did that, uh, we talked about two oh six down here in U six, Dan, about that guy up the road. It has been surveyed, uh, all, actually, we've done, we saw it taken already out, so. If we're going to do something like that, there's row trees, we're going to have to continue to also give those trimmed back, bring them up, uh, get that rid of that through there.
And he said some two oh six?
Two oh six. I didn't remember the guy that had the bridge washed out in the back of the fifties and he came into one piece of his property and, uh, the clerks that own the line over here were planting.
Yes.
It's a roadway.
Facts.
Has been surveyed and, uh, so, there are some trees. Basically, what it is, the fence line so far with grass, and then it turns into where they've been planting in the field, you know, or in the road. So, you got half of the trees you've got to deal with, and the other half is just going to be, uh, planted. So, this morning, we're running later in, kind of, for the trees to be pulled out.
Oh, not higher?
No, we, we take care of it.
Yeah.
Private stuff.
Mulch and mulch and all. I wouldn't spend a lot of time down there. Not a lot, traffic road.
It's not.
Yeah, I mean, that's, it ends at a creek, so.
It does.
I don't think that I would be spending a whole heck lot of time on it, uh, and if it, if it comes down and needs to be, I mean, that's one of them that, that, it goes to one person. One person only, but to get to the other side of the creek is land, that would be one that I could see as a minimum maintenance road, or we vacate the road or whatever.
I can see it's vacating that, so that we don't have.
Well, we tried.
I know.
Tried.
I know.
So, I'm, I'm worried enough.
You can't get the two landowners together on the, to agree.
That's not so much. But just you see my existing as well?
Yeah, the gentleman doesn't, the gentleman doesn't want to vacate it because that's his own access.
Sure. But that's what I say, so, I, I think that the, the thing is that the individuals need to come together and understand, you know, if we need to get a bill of it also, and have them understand that, it's still a road, and they can't be planting on it. And, but as far as spending a lot of time on it, I sure as heck would be spending a lot of time cleaning trees and everything else, or.
There's path back there, that ought to be good enough, throw a mower down through there, it's all good.
Well, again, the way, the way it is, the grass was out here, it's a part of the field, and these trees were hanging out over this, so, if any equipment through here, you're going to drive over this field. That's where I'm getting, so.
Most fields in the right of way, you said you were planning, you can drive.
Down the paths.
They tore up the road.
Yeah, they tore, took, took the road, tore it up. And, uh, plant.
Okay, that's dedicated road.
It is.
Okay.
And that, that's not why the problem, the problem I had was getting to that, uh, the way it's laid out, it's sort of French road trees hanging over, spot of grass, and then versus field. So, to get down there, you have to drive into versus field, because of the trees.
It's CRP land in the back, he has required by law to maintain that, so, spraying, mowing, burning, et cetera, et cetera, ever so. And he's complying. And he couldn't get, he's land, basically, because it tore up the road. Two sisters own, one owns this side, the other, they, one farmer farms the whole thing, he just tore the road up, land of the road.
Well, I mean, that's kind of like, uh, shrugging here, was because if it is dedicated right of way, they don't have any right to do anything when that impedes anything that you guys are doing. And if you're building a road, improving a road, fixing anything in that zone, you can tear it down.
Right.
Or you can go, you can ride whatever you want all over the place.
So, minimum amount of time spent in there trimming some trees back with the hoe, and they call it good.
You don't have to go out of your way, but yeah, you can, I mean, there isn't stopping in that, in the area of where.
Okay. You guys probably heard about the state digging, trying to find monuments over on two seventy, two seventy eight, thirty six. There is a statue that says that we are responsible for replacing, fixing, whatever, sinkholes or whatever happens, uh, when that happens. Uh, did talk to the state also on that, and they said they would, uh, not just leave high dry, they said we need a rock, I don't know if they create a rock, it's just, I said, that's fine.
So, they can just get, they can go middle run and walk away, right?
Yes, they can. They can dig.
And there's, there's, there's another one of your apparent Tyson mandates, right? There's another one of your apparent Tyson unfunded mandates.
I believe, I didn't write it down, but I think it was nineteen dash fourteen thirty.
Yeah.
It was a statue.
Fourteen thirty?
I don't know if it's up here yet. Again, that's all.
Well, that's no problem.
Matt, the same sort of, I'm GPS, uh, it's going to be on conference, so, I told him that you guys would probably be there, and he'd like to block out the time and kind of go over her thoughts of all of the graph. And said that Jeanie has been wonderful working with her on Star Program, and he, he says she gives the keys to the kingdom, so, apparently, she's allowing to get into resistance, see how it works, and rise and bear it. So, hopefully, get that set up, and it's a minimal, yeah. Feel like we're still dealing with, with teamwork, uh, you know, we had another one cracked, and we came back about that, we found two more of them cracked, so, uh, Johnson needed to sail down there for a little bit, so, and kind of all put it, so. My dad called me this morning, he said, home with the holidays, he said, I'm off, I'm done yet, so. So, it's over there. Uh, one point six, we did get that over, the lock all member.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, the, you're, you got it, nineteen fourteen thirty. United States Public Land Survey, former intersections in their corner monument located on the street road, cross preservation, reestablishment, corner monument shall be taken by an agency responsible maintaining the road. For every such corner monument located on a private property by the land. And assuming it's in the road, it's private, so it's your business.
Wow.
Um, wow.
What I thought.
So, they're saying essentially only that monument marker is, be preserved in some way so that it can.
Sure, but they have to go dig around when they're digging, they dig up the intersection, and from what that says, and they have, they walk away, and we have to go fix it.
They, but they don't walk away. They, they.
Backfill it.
They backfill it, they're not going to leave something.
Once it rains, once it rains, it'll be.
Then it'll settle.
Yeah. And on two seventy eight, they done it all the way across the road. Two eighty six, I'm, but the, two eighty six up here was Nino Hall's responsibility there, uh, man, they had a hole probably six foot by six foot, probably five, so it'd be.
Try to find it, yeah. Feel like now that, um, thanks to the new fuel system, we're moving ahead and should go every year for the meeting we had the other day with Brett Carley?
Yeah, but I, I can mean, they're at home, I gotta think about this for a second, it's as if my members, uh, did he say that there were, you know, when you were asking about the fuel, that they'd charge?
Right. Did he say?
Carbo plus free.
Okay, but did he say there was an extra charge on there for the tanks?
Right, so it's a, it, it's a upcharge for the systems that they put in, so basically, we're, yeah, leasing those at the price of the fuel.
At the end of that, that we were paying for the lease to use the tanks, but we, that doesn't go forward ownership of the tanks?
I'd have to go back to the contract. I don't believe the, I don't believe that there was ever a, we would own the tanks, they're always going to be a lease.
Like, I know with the other group, it was, you had the option.
I, I knew that there was something in the contract about having the option to, to purchase.
Purchase.
But it was never really spelled out, but there is that option in there, I believe.
At the end of the lease term, you mean?
Yeah.
Like for reducing that.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
I, I'm, I'm pretty sure that that was in there, I'd have to go back and that's the contract, that.
First, one of the contracts, I think you might be referred to as to where there is the base price of the fuel plus, I don't know, one or two cents more over the course of the time, and that ownership would be, uh, numerous.
I know there was talk about, yeah, the other group, that it'd be a, some of the cents.
Yeah.
It averaged out over five years and, and, uh, something like that, and then the, the extra cents would be added to the fuel for gallons.
Yes, correct.
And then, see, and you have the tanks.
Yeah, I would like to see folks have that.
I think that's theirs. That was the only question I had, is if I got to think about that, I, I don't know.
Wait a minute.
What exactly is this, will we have money invested in the tanks, or is here dollars invested in it at the end, or?
So, this is a lease, but, I mean, the closing of lease would tell you probably, it requires like dollars, right? That you pretty much plow the payment of the property in the lease over the time. Um, and if they say, well, you're, you're able to buy at current market value of ten, you know, so it could be seven thousand dollars out of the name, then, you know, when it's appreciated a bit or whatever, you usually would be ten thousand, but then it's six thousand, then you got, you bought. You can't buy anything really as you go along.
Yeah.
So, that's kind of how those things work, or should in the normal lease situation.
Yeah, so. My concern was the things we talked about out there, we got those all worked out for us, placement of fuel.
Placement of the, the pumps, electronics.
Yes.
And, uh, I did get the approval back from the fire marshal for the one out here, Shaw, and we got the one for the place, uh, last month, we got the other one. Now, it's turned over to J D H E for permits, so, it's real paperwork.
So, last Monday, just for your, you guys' certification, Mark, and I went out and met with Road and Bridge after a meeting Monday, uh, Brett Carley was kind of, we sent a table, Bryson, we got, I think, everything hashed out. Figured out, just so everybody's on the same page, and we can move forward with this and get it implemented before the first of the year.
Agree.
Ten thousand, that will take long.
What, because?
Because the, there's no way for permits, and then the slab, as before, the black lines we ran, so they cannot, you cannot do this stuff until you have permits.
Okay. Um, I did tell them, Brett and Carley, that if they needed to bring the tanks in early. So, we would store them out of Road and Bridge, because otherwise, they have to store them when they're manufactured, they're going to charge them, so, Bryson figured out what equipment we would need to offload them, and we have plenty of room out there to store.
Right, and that's, he's called Brett this morning, he said, we can probably have an update on when the tanks are going to be here, people have said mulcher it on the escalator this week, but if, if the tanks are going to be in this week, we're going to put it on, and Judy can take it off, and that will last for.
Okay. Um, what's the amount of snow, just for the record, that has to hit the ground before it's true? Uh, because, uh, once it got packed down, they became extremely, extremely slick, because it's just hard pack. So, I, I believe that's the responsibility of superintendent, Linda, should have gone out, made some phone calls, at the very least, to her personnel down in, in the areas and said, hey, what do you have for snow? I'll come look at it, go evaluate it, it would have taken one or two people to run down and knock those off, but nothing happened. And people weren't happy, personally. I would appreciate it. I think the state is, anything over three inches, if, if I remember correctly, so, um.
Well, they don't, they don't have anything on there, maybe we need the statute on that, so there's no.
Right.
I mean, yeah.
I mean, I really think you can, you just insert the, the human element into it, just, hey, it's snowing, I'm going to call all, all my districts, I'm going to reach out to my blade operator, hey, what's, what's going on in your area, talk to me. I mean, if we can't do that, we got a problem. I mean, if we can't do that, we got a problem.
It's kind of, it's kind of hard to, this snow though, because up, up here, they got nothing.
So you don't make the phone call?
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying.
Although, yes, I mean.
If it's snowing.
But it's gotta be kind of in, the individual blade operators, doesn't it, and their district to reach out to the management and say, look, I'm getting.
I, I would agree, I would agree.
Down here, we can.
But part of the mark is that some blade operators don't live in that area.
Right.
So I still, it goes back to the superintendent. If it's snowing, I'm gonna get in my truck and I'm gonna drive around, I'm gonna check things out and start making phone calls, but if nothing's being done, I got a problem with that.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, we need to, but like I said, you're, if you get on the phone and call the operator, the operator doesn't live in their district, so.
Doesn't do any good.
Yeah, so that's what's in the.
Therefore, then you've got to drive to the area. I mean, she knows who lives in the area, all she'd do is call Richard Spielman and say, Richard, what's it doing, and wait. All she'd do is call me, I live in that area, it's a simple phone call.
Yeah.
I appreciate it, anything else? Okay, you guys got anything else for?
I have nothing to do, well, I'm.
Uh, we're all rock down on the, uh, St. Mary's, just, uh, did some rock. Uh, they said they hope to be, brush them here, uh, maybe this week.
Boy, we're gonna get on the phone and call the guy in charge of that.
We know somebody to do that?
I know somebody that.
But, uh, like I said, if we're pulling out St. Mary's and brushing down on the south end of the county right now for that whole days.
What about A M's, A M's, doing anything out here yet?
Uh, yeah.
Have they been good sir, last week?
I haven't heard anything from them. I know they did clear it and then last I heard, they were saying, uh, that, that it's a, it's a.
And you said they're, they're out at the Tennessee court, they're.
Wrong size, wrong size.
Wrong size. That big pile is gone.
No. Like I said, they, but nibble, they're, it's a, it's a, it's not unless cameras or anything, like they were just all down there, taking them south of it. Okay.
Thank you.
And there's lots of things going through other.
Yeah, all done. You ready to run a check? I have not. Okay.
If you wanna read the, I'll entertain a motion to approve that in twenty fifty minutes, whenever you get a chance.
Yeah, I would, I would.
I will abstain, I did see one typo in there.
Oh, was there?
Uh.
You're good, you're, you're a good editor.
Back on the second page, one, two, three, fourth paragraph, uh, with, uh, Mr. Freeman. Mr. Freeman is request, who is requesting an extension on living in this camper living.
Yeah.
So I pick up.
Well, I wonder if he moved, you know, should we talk to Kate?
He hasn't, I, I don't know, Kate can be out, but.
That's why I'm sorry to hear that.
Alright, so the motion?
Yeah, motion to accept November twenty fifth, eight, with the correct.
Correct.
All seconded, it's been moved to second, all the favors, say aye, all of those things up.
Tom, you were up.
Okay. So I'm passionate about this, I was in court the other day, I went back to swallow the mic, because they couldn't hear me. Um, the first thing is, is I got, I don't know if anybody else was on this, but they sent me the contracts for all the public defenders. Um, that was done last year, that they passed with any, or be renewed.
Back?
The, the terms in the contract say they renew automatically every year in the same form. So I didn't know if there was any discussion afoot, I hadn't heard anything about the public defenders being dissatisfied with any particular thing.
I haven't heard anything, you guys?
I haven't heard.
I have, I have, I asked each, every one of them if they were satisfied with their contract, they said they are. So.
They are?
They are.
So all of them agree?
All of them agree. Individual, I didn't talk to them together, but.
Okay, well, you probably shouldn't have done something wrong here.
Yeah. Obviously, too much.
Yeah, so I, I think if that was my, I looked through the agreement, they got some things, and there's an individual one that, you know, is kind of, you remove if you've got a new contract, but still, you know, those things don't affect anything, the only thing that's material is that, the, the, the price, I mean, how much you're paying them. So if there was an increase, decrease, side move, or whatever, that would have to be addressed, but if you guys are happy with.
Well, I, I think that we had addressed that when we addressed the wage, is when we, uh, did the original one amongst us ourselves. And we thought that for the first year, you know, we, we'd set the amount and then let it go through the second year, so we've got to go back and review the, the cost and the data and see just what exactly, uh, if, if everything was going go ethically for the wage, so.
And they are supposed to be turning in each one of them, a, a time sheet basically telling how many hours they're, they're putting in.
Telling you on, yeah, their clients or.
Correct, and so Mark's exactly right, so in twenty, in twenty five, we'll be able to go back and look at the data and we'll go, oh, okay, we're getting very, they're putting very few hours in, maybe we need to reduce it, or they're putting a whole lot of hours in, we're getting a value, so more of their, being their compensative. Eat, or, uh.
Okay, well, I, I would say, you know, that if you're saying you're happy with the contract, then the jury will continue connection, you kind of. I know somebody, you want me to just look by Amy about that, and I don't know if that, she was, who, who's the one who kind of speaks to them?
We can, we can send something official, there if we can, uh, send an official letter saying that, that, something to the effect that we're.
Assume that the contract were continuing, we're coming here in the same time.
Yeah, that way they're not wondering and you've done something official and so general consensus is we're, we're, we'll continue on with the same contract as this.
Yeah, legally, unless you guys actually terminated it, 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 so.
Okay.
I just wanted to make clear that that was on the, on the radar.
Okay.
Can we, we put the bed to Kevin Dillon?
Not yet.
Not yet?
I'm waiting on verification that it's been set out.
Okay. Well, uh, two, probably two more things on my list here, not clear to do. Uh, got some solar stuff to talk about, and the other one would be executive session, we're trying to find privilege for, for the personnel.
Okay.
So you guys decide what you're gonna take first.
We can do the, the executive session first and get that out of the way.
Yeah, okay, um, probably about twenty minutes, best to say.
How long?
Twenty, twenty, unless you attorney client.
Okay.
Attorney client.
Uh, I'll move, we go into executive session here, the purpose of attorney client, early discussions, we're appearing for twenty minutes, starting at nine thirty four, with the meeting reopened. Twenty minutes later in the commission room, the purpose of discussing continued legal matters, claims of all the candidates.
Sir.
Mr. Stank, with all the say aye.
Aye.
All of those say aye.
Did you want, sir? Would you do me a favor? Would you write your name on the.
Did you hear that?
Oh, sir.
Yeah, for a little while.
That's not what you heard. You're gonna get a bite, huh? Oh, thank you. You okay? Are you okay at all, breathe? Mmm. Your macaroni's all on that?
So it took you two tries, and like two visits, you decided to connect. And it was the end of the second visit, like, she was checking it, like, wait, 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 wait. And just, just speaking to me, so.
And then I'm, and then I'm.
Maybe to have a. Right. So, and then, like, you bring it back. If you don't like it, then it's really pretty. And we can, if you want, we bundle up the stuff outside, just breathe if you want.
This should breathe.
Well, that's why I bundle up, do one, bundle up a little bit. I mean, I think her, that's what I was doing.
No, I don't know, I don't know where I was going with this story, I have no idea. I have no idea, I, I had a point.
Cause she got a lot in her mind, got a lot in her mind, we had a lot, well, she had a lot. I thought I was just a cat last night.
Oh, no. We have lots of dogs.
No, I mean, she, she's, she's. She, I didn't know.
Yes. I just scared, I just.
But she comes down like a long night from my husband, so we'll see if it's, um, she ate this morning, but I, but she's like, looks as, her, maybe it's, uh.
Probably, she was one of those, um, so they, 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 she was a worship, she's, uh, they, they.
Not a duck. They have our life. And, and your cats, how, just. Cats, it's like, you want to drive, it's right on the second floor, you just drive away, it's like, it's a hard job.
Yes.
It's not done, it's essentially done in now, which is because it was down the hill, and then it's, and it's maintenance, and unless you got like, maybe. And unless you got like the rugged side by side, there's like a rock shelf, like a step. You could take this thing out, use it as a step. It's really beautiful. But like you're not gonna drive it. I suppose you could, but I just think that was great. So.
And it's on the way to your house.
No, it's like, so I'm here and then you go down the hill. There's our neighbors and then I'm right off the neighbors. And so it's like it's essentially like.
Yeah, it's essentially done.
Yeah. You know, there's so many stories. I guess you have to just remember. You'll be watching. Yeah. It's like, yeah, it's smart. It's around to you and stuff. Yeah, semi that was stuck on that road. We took a lot and we actually drove that over to the house. And I remember there was like a sign that said, "I'm going to buy a two." And I remember that being and uh. Do you see one of them? Do you see this? Yep. We said, "Oh, it's a lot." Yeah. I can't see. Well. I don't know. It's kind of famous. That's my baby. I think he won. But it probably contains two or three. I mean, it's great. I do the walk. And I think they're both on. Yeah. I guess she's just. It's not sure. Yeah. She's. She's. I gather. They also have like something that you can show. But I mean, obviously these things in the broad, the God, the Christianity, the Islam.
No.
I don't know. What is that one? Yeah. It'll take you. I don't have a lot of weight to sit over. So.
True. True.
Maybe I've got to. Anti types. Or some system. Oh, it's. It's hard to. It's hard to.
How.
Never. She was. It'll take you. Well, I don't have a lot of weight to sit over. So.
True. True.
Maybe I've got to. Anti types. Or some system. Oh, it's. It's hard to. It's hard to. It's hard to. Yeah. And. Now. She was. This. Oh. And she. She has a. If you. This. She's. Sorry. She's just. Just. She's. She's. Not sure. Because he doesn't know. Yes. She was like, "I couldn't get over." I'm like, "Just let her see." And like the ocean and then blow up. So. I'm like. Which is. I think. I think. I think. Most. I know. I took. Uh. He said. He was. I think. 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 But even. I think. I think. But. I think. 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 I mean, I just have a picture. Sorry. I don't know. Let's see. Texted me. I didn't write the text until I got that. I didn't. It doesn't matter. I'm busy. I just. I just. Okay. So. Okay. Thank you. I think. I think. I think. I think. I think. I've got something else. I have to make it. I'm sorry. So. Thank you. I think. Your music is. Okay, my whole heart.
What kind of music? You're using it as well, right?
Yeah. Right. Exactly. Yeah, exactly. It's a miniature tool, right? So that's a table. There shouldn't be no. Right. There should be. Oh, I gave it to you now. Like I heard. Uh. You made me. For my birthday. And then on the second. Over someone. Specifically. We just. You might have. You know, when you come live or just text before the narrative comes by. Is the narcissist structure. Can you be in for the two? I don't know. Help parents work the same. Everything was at the whim of whatever struck them.
Yeah, that's what I want to do. Right. You know, I want to be talking. Two seconds. I get a two thing. More.
Yeah. I get it. But. So you then. So then. You're.
Is he in the motion?
I think it's narcissist. Yeah. I was going somewhere to go and then they went up to my son's wedding. And they never showed. No. I don't mind. I guess. Or definitely consciously. But.
What about?
My person. Anyway, we're just gonna finish. Yes. I have something. It's not funny. It's actually.
It's gross. I share one.
My brother's like that. Years ago. I got the weather. Ready to go?
Yes.
Yep.
I'm convinced. The transfer part of deusing the beast. I don't know if it's. So we actually do that there.
It's just, it's not funny. It's actually.
It's gross.
My brother's like that. A couple of years ago. I got the weather. Ready to go?
Yes.
Yep.
Convinced. Trying to. The transfer part of deusing the beast. I don't know if it's. So we actually do that there.
I didn't know. Yeah.
Yeah. I'm texting Scott. Good. Okay. Go ahead.
All right. So Solar?
Yeah.
You want to have two tapes down here?
Yeah, that'd be great. I see you. Oh.
I didn't. Yeah, I didn't remember.
Oh, okay. The only reason I was asking is, is what your qualifications were. I thought if you wanted to look over and give some advice as we work through this. You said something about the intellectual engineer.
Yes, I am.
Yeah. And you wouldn't mind providing documentation showing that. I can tell you I drive a CDL or have a CDL, but until I show it to you, you wouldn't know.
All right.
But I just thought that. If you would, if you were interested in doing that.
I can.
Yes. Okay. Thank you. All right. Move ahead.
I think I sent last week. A little section. I got copies here. Got it.
Kate is not here, right?
Yeah.
Long.
Thank you. Sir.
I'll take one.
Okay. It's a lot. It's so fun.
And the reason I kind of sniffed this one out because I think it was the one that was most changed. Um. Kind of what we discussed. So that's why it's 3A.
Okay.
All right. Well, she isn't here.
Okay, you're on the page number.
Yeah, first is page 23.
Okay.
There's a highlight of the 13M. That was changed. I hadn't noticed that this was something suggested. Um. Just because you don't have any like. Apparently you don't have any personal or military. Well, you just have commercial or military airstrips. So you wouldn't have like private airstrip either.
Say that one more time.
Well, if you place, you place the solar within five miles of any. I think we had the old version that had something to the effect of any, any type of airstrip. You just said you don't have any like.
A private airstrip would not be affected.
Yeah. It's just commercial or military. It's just we're within five miles. You're gonna pass all their.
Then should that also read commercial airport? Okay. Because you're saying private or military airstrip or commercial airport. Because I don't, I don't.
It's understood.
What was that?
I think it's understood that commercial or military airstrip or airport.
I want to make it explicitly clear that this is not anything to the private airstrip.
Okay, well, that, that was being my. My ignorance of this would be. I mean, I don't know if I'll airport or strip.
I think, I think what he's saying is the word commercial should be in front of airport or airstrip.
Okay.
So what I'm saying is, is the way I read this, it's already saying commercial. Saying for military airstrip, airport.
Like I say, I want to spell that explicitly. But.
What's, what's the college name?
Well, that, that's what I, that's what I don't, that's what I don't know. I mean, if somebody puts a.
It's, it's not that. It's putting commercial in front of them. Put that in front of.
If you just put commercial in front of or for commercial airport.
There you go.
I would feel more comfortable with that.
Okay, so just kind of reverse commercial and military in that phrase. So it's a. Five miles and a military.
I would leave commercial or military airstrip and just add in commercial in front of airport.
Okay.
Like I say, I'm, I'm, I don't want somebody to come back on and say, "Well, I put in a, I put in an airstrip here by house." And it's down by airport. So.
That's just non-application meaning, right? Military doesn't have an airport.
I would agree.
They have, they have an airfield.
Yes.
Or strip.
I said, I, I just want to.
Okay.
I just want to put as much as what I would like.
All right, well, I'll sort that.
Okay.
They maybe just have.
If we, if we have to put in, in the, in the definitions.
Diagramm sense is it's conjunction that or is one, the other or is the other. So technically from a legal standpoint, it's okay.
Well, like I say.
But I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, but put them regular where you stand.
Yeah. So then if we have to put in the definition or the definition of an airstrip and an airport in, in the definitions, I have no problem with that either. Such as a personal airstrip. I'm fine with that.
Yeah. And I did, so I did highlight the number 14 because it basically was changed substantially all of it. Because that's. I mean, the discussion was is that you don't want. Uh. The bond or not had bonding terms in it terminology. So basically I just kind of blud it out. Uh. But bonding changed it. So the first two were unchanged probably A and D. I'm talking about paragraph 14. A and B are not changed because that's still the same. It's decommissioning fund requirement. Um. Providing amount of escrow funds or revivable letter of credit with benefit controlled by board of commissioners. And amount equal to the estimated decommission cost to ensure proper decommission and reclamation of the site. So trying to recall if there's anything big in this that shocked you. But uh. Little two is the escrow fund or letter of present because of credit, permission, destruction. And basically because it's an escrow, it's gotta be, there's gotta be an escrow agreement that's entered into. Which would entitle county to take the funds if necessary. And then I, little three is they'll show them through the mechanism for adjustment of a life product. If you're interested in doing it. And I can make that in the. And that subpage then is. Under letter pitch will be just a reflection. And you're having an annual kind of just already in this process. Reevaluate the estimated cost, make sure you keep up with the cost of disposal. And then there's four is just basically you have a. See if you, if you run out of that, we'll really, we'll grab that escrow. Even though it's not like it's gonna be a, it's not gonna be a big or any factor. That unified authority. So that, I guess that's, just open that comments. Is that along the lines of what you guys were thinking? And that change.
How do you set the adjustment for inflation? What are you going, what tracking device are you going to use for inflation, say, is it going to be? I don't know, I mean.
The normal kind of way you probably would do it is, is, you know, uh, cost of living indices, government, federal resources for Kansas City region, say. Kind of get, who, part of labor, maybe it does, it doesn't harm, it doesn't, and usually you're going to be able to keep track of. And that, that's not very specific in here because, you know, maybe that's the question. If you wanted to be that specific, we could be that specific in, in this regulation, say, you know, full determine from Kansas City area, cost, see the price index for.
I think, I think that, there again, I, I'm on the side of being more specific and more detailed on things like this than not. I think it would be a good idea to, uh, let's look and see where do we want to pull this from for the inflation? Whether it is for the cost of living in Kansas City area or Kansas City region, uh, or just how we want to do that. I think that's the question we need to ask, and we need to look into that a little bit more.
Can't, so I guess I envision a little bit different. If, if we know upfront to decommission a site that size, we're gonna have a dollar amount, we're gonna know what that's gonna be. We'll just say it's ten dollars to decommission the entire thing. Wouldn't it be easier to go back to the engineer or the company and say, "Okay, based on what you're seeing, cost of, of construction and this type of thing." Three years later, what is, what is this same project that costs today's number to have a decommission?
That's addressed in B. That's addressed in B.
But as opposed to looking at whatever the cost of living for the average individual, why are we looking at that?
Uh, I don't think it's necessarily cost, the, the cost of living for the average individual. I think the cost of living increase is a, more of a general increase for everything. Whether it be from running a piece of heavy equipment or driving a truck up down the road.
Yeah, I see what you're saying. I, I guess I would disagree with you because typically, I mean, from what I've seen in the last couple of years, the cost of living hasn't kept up with the cost of construction. It's typically more. I mean, if you look at what it costs to build a house today versus what it, you know, what they're saying the inflation rate is or cost of living rate is, I don't think it's keeping up. I think we need to look at real numbers. So if we have an engineering firm that we're utilizing to gather this data, we're not paying for it. So if we're gonna reevaluate this every three years, let's look at real numbers. Let's say, okay, three years into the project, um, we need to know what that number is to decommission today. If it takes them thirty days to get back to us, great. They come back and say it's gone up twelve percent, uh, to decommission this same site, okay, that's what we need is twelve more percent. It gives us, I mean, it, it takes the responsibility off of us to look at, you know, what the internet says. And it, and it puts it on an engineering firm that's gonna go out and just do the work. Again, we're not paying for that. Uh, the company, whatever company comes in here, they're the ones paying for this engineering firm to do this work, to find out what it is through us. They're gonna reimburse us, they're under, they're hired by us, but reimbursing us. Me, they get, if I want to know what it costs to build a house, I'm gonna call builder versus look at what the inflation rate is. That's just my thoughts on it. So if we just put that in there, that it's up to the board of county commissioners to determine what that, uh, that increase will be through an engineering firm.
I see what you're saying, I think that's right in the sense that you're probably going to get a better number from the three-year X Y Z process than just kind of automatic, you know.
Three percent.
Yeah, whatever the thing says.
Because it may not cover.
Yeah.
Five percent may not.
Right.
The only thing is, is that I think that the effort to do that is pretty nominal, I've done several nights, but I think the question, you know, just looking at percentage, is not tough. But you're right in the sense that it, garbage in, garbage out. That stuff is just, you know, everybody, you know, in the world in the city.
All over the place.
Yeah, you, maybe there's an index that would gauge construction cost, commercial construction cost perhaps, but this is a specialized thing too. I mean, you're, you're not gonna go get a regular contract.
So you're not gonna get banged, demolished, and have silverware to do this job.
Well, one of the things that I'm kind of looking at there too though, is the fact that we get, we get a, uh. We get the third year in, we do, the, the engineering firm gets the number.
I think that's a more accurate.
But I think that one thing that kind of covers this too is by putting in that inflation factor, uh, every year. Then you don't want a two-year gap where you have no kind of an increase until you get the engineering firm to look at it. Because if you did have catastrophic failure, then, then they had to come in and clean up. Then you're kind of sitting there with a three-year gap.
Two different things, you're talking about two different things. I'm talking about decommissioning, you're talking about catastrophic failure.
Right.
Which means the decommission. Correct.
Do we have, so what do we got for catastrophic failure? It's gonna be, part of it's gonna have to be decommission cleaned up with this money.
That, I don't think we've addressed. I guess what I'm just trying to address first is just the, the decommissioning portion. And how do we arrive at, at what a fair number is to decommission? And then what percentage of that do we want to hold in an escrow account? And I'm saying by, by just saying, engineering firm A, I need a number on that from day one. Now we know that in three years, we're gonna be calling you again, and we're gonna say, we need to know what that's gone up and how much more do we need to have put into escrow. Insurance, I would think, would come into play on a catastrophic event.
Okay, tornado rips it up.
That's just my thoughts, you correct me, I, I mean.
Yeah, that's, that's gonna cover, I mean, it's gonna, the question's kind of being, does do they repair and then reestablish or just say?
I just don't think looking at what the cost of living is, is gonna give us probably the accurate number that we're looking for. It would be easy to go, you know, Google what's cost of living, but I'm not sure that's gonna, it probably isn't gonna give us a high enough amount.
Right.
That's my.
Then, then do we need, okay.
Well, if you remember, sorry.
Get them off the hook or anything too. Correct, correct, it's just a way of.
We're off like by three percent, ninety-seven percent.
Right. Also, Todd, I noticed in visiting with commissioners up in Iowa, as well as their emergency management folks. And they stated, and I don't see in here that do not allow recyclable material to be used in either decommissioning or whatever changes that make. Some of it's aluminum. What they will do is we have, say, ten pounds of aluminum, it's hard work to say for me, to be applied to the decommissioning. Say there's a thousand dollars' worth of aluminum that they would use and take that and put it over here at the decommissioning.
Right, yeah.
Fund.
Okay, so they're, you're basically saying the recycle, the recycle room is real fund, like they get account on as a setup.
Uh, no, I, I'm saying that they recommend that they do not use that as part of the G D. Say they have seven hundred thousand here, and the recyclable materials, three hundred thousand. It equals a hundred, but no, to make sure it's over here and not to be used. They can do whatever they want, if they want.
They can't, I mean, that's just, yeah, so you're saying that's not in our calculation?
I don't see it in here, it shouldn't be.
You mean that basically it should say, the, the operator should not be able to credit.
Right.
Recyclable.
Get credit.
Yes.
Give credit for recyclable materials in the field.
Yeah.
For any value, I'm gonna go through products, any value obtained from materials. So. Okay, actually, what's the problem? So we're thinking that, uh. So what's the fine word on the, uh, cost of living? Do you want, you want to play with that a little bit, or just?
If, if you guys want to take it out on, on fine theft.
We could just put in there that every, and do you want every three years or five years?
I just didn't go over three, I think it needs to be.
Every three years, it will be reevaluated through the county's, uh, through an engineering firm to, to get, uh, cost of actual decommission.
I can, I can make explicit in there, this will include inflationary E F X.
There you go.
So they don't feel shy about, you know, yeah. We're projecting on basis of inflationary costs.
Okay.
And like I said, we can get some detailed escrow agreements or, you know, you really get, you know, tons of those.
Okay.
So we get on fourteen then, any other thoughts? Next one is, section five, construction, there's a highlight portion, this is page twenty-four. And that's just an addition that I did because I was reading over this and I think this was asked about. So basically, you can halt construction if there's, you know, if there's damage or something going on that's not appropriate or damages. Basically, it gives you kind of veto, a little bit of veto over activities that they're, you know, they're not doing what they said or damaging places. So it's pretty extreme, but you really, you know, condition use permit, it goes out and non-compliance is always a procedural question. The sheets right to you, you know, in front of you guys. So, you know, so if, I can't remember if those comments have been made or, I just fleshed it out or not, that's purpose of this one.
Yeah, I like the.
Yeah, that sounds, that sounds good to me.
Agreed.
I'm gonna go to page twenty-eight. I'm still gonna be working on that, commissary of cost, on that. This is non-compliance penalty, there was a note that we need to outline a, you know, clear criminal offense penalty, that's what's highlighted. Basically, if they operate without permit, shall be a misdemeanor punishable by a minimum fine of two hundred dollars, in or imprisonment for not over six months. Each other day with separate offense. And that's kind of like, a two hundred dollar fine would be per day. Um, instance, and that keeps, I mean, the, the overarching idea here is that basically, anything that involves more than six months of imprisonment or a fine of over a thousand dollars is presumably a felony offense in an outfit, kind of looking at it. So I was trying to keep it on a level where it's not, you know, because when you start talking about felony offenses, people start, you know, bumping up and fighting back, you know, whereas opposed to having a misdemeanor and just be almost like a civil type penalty at that, at that level. So you're not making it into some kind of big issue that results in them fighting back. So that, the question being, is that what you guys were meaning? Or as far as a penalty, a criminal penalty, can we pay that too?
Can we actually create that though? Are we?
I think you can.
Versus the courts?
Yeah, I think you can. I think you create it for reg, that says violation is either misdemeanor or felony.
Okay, I understand the concept. I think too, I'll just call it that enough.
My, yeah, that's.
Per day.
And the question being too is, you know, who's ultimately responsible for that? Is corporations, hottest last lights or something like that, sending bankruptcies? And, you know.
Not us. Turbo. So, so you need a number plugged into that?
Or, or, yeah, you know, I mean, I'm just saying, remember it's every day, it continues. So it's like.
Did any of the other, and you, you have copies of the other regulations. And Mark, do you recall that one from Iowa has, has a similar clause? And now we can take a look at what they did up there.
You know, it's certainly possible, you know, a lot of the times these are written, if there's a generalized penalty that isn't necessarily in the solar act. Meaning you might have just a general provision that says, if you're violating this code, what do they violate? Can't criminal punish the, you know. I don't know, they don't, probably.
I don't see any Butler. I, I, I would just see it have it in here. I just didn't spell everything out.
I just quickly looked at Johnson County's and Luggles County's, and I see specific criminal penalty. And where I put it in this, this is kind of my creation. I'm a free formant, I was a curriculum at this time, so.
So I mean, do you have a recommendation of a number?
Well, that's what I put in it, that's my recommendation. I mean, two hundred dollars per day, it's my money, it's kind of a, what would I say? I think that's a, here's, here's my comparison. In cities that I have, if you are, you have a nuisance violation, so you have a bunch of garbage in your yard, and you, you cited for it, and the notice goes out, and you don't clean it up, and you do everything. You know, you can be prosecuted for that, and the criminal charge basically says a hundred dollars a day, but the nuisance is. So that was my basis to say, it's like a nuisance charge. You know, you're not really, you're, you're trying to get them to stop leaving trash around or stop doing what they're doing and make it expensive enough that they would do that. So I just said two hundred bucks, and you always have kind of a fallback, but we're gonna throw somebody a thing.
So, yeah, I, I guess I'd think in a company that size, two hundred dollars a day, then, I mean, they'd drink more bottled water than that.
Yeah.
We'll get to that.
And then, and then the other side of that is if you make it high enough, then you're, you're kind of aligning misdemeanor site. Say five hundred dollars a day, you know, the argument being like. You know, the argument being like you're, you're hiding felony-level penalties in the misdemeanor. And not that there's like some things that slap us down, so don't get me wrong. I'm just talking about theory here of how you, how you address this.
So if you put a thousand dollars a day on there, there's no reason we couldn't.
Yeah, and then, you know, if somebody comes in and says, well, you're, I mean, the argument being against it being that you're giving people felony-level penalty, but you're not giving them the legal protection as it arrived, as you call it, misdemeanor. Right? Because misdemeanor is, you know, arguably, uh, you know, it's right, certain constitutional rights may not attach, like rights of counsel and stuff like that. It's just, and this is all very theoretical at this point. Maybe nobody cares, but if your, your thought is, is that you would get, I mean, that's just my thinking in traveling. So I'm not enamored of it. So if you guys think, well, this is a big company, this is, you really gotta get, you gotta shake their fells. It's a thousand dollars a day. I don't have an argument against that other than the fact that they're, you know, if they're that sophisticated, they probably got more emphasis of this than just, so.
So let's, are you okay with just throwing a bigger number in there at this point?
Uh, yeah.
What would your number be?
If I was going to look at it and throw a bigger number in there, I would, I mean, I could put at least five in there. Not, not, I think that'd probably be more-
Five thousand?
No. I mean, you want five thousand?
I'm asking that, I would use a five. I wouldn't-
I, I was saying five hundred because that's, to me, that's more of an eye-opener than two. But still not, and I, I see what you're saying about getting it up there too high to where they're gonna start pushing back on it rather than, uh, getting fixed.
Okay. Let's start with five hundred then.
If it's two hundred, you, you put that in there and it's like, I agree with you, just like a-
Okay. We'll start with five hundred. Zoning planning may change it. They may want ten thousand.
Yeah.
I got that one down there and for further reflection too.
Yep.
The next one is on twenty-nine, page twenty-nine. I think there's a, I think there's a series of probably whatever called ten thousand foot things we're probably gonna talk about, some details like this. So, and this is one of, this is what, you know, kind of what do you want? Or the LCS, LSECS system. Kind of reminded of, but I can't think of the name.
I think the only thing that a limited shouldn't have to comply with would be the total acreage. I mean, well, because I, I think, I think you have to apply to everything.
Well, it says, here's the definition, so we're all on the same page.
Okay.
Solar energy conversion system that does not exceed twenty contiguous acres in area. Minor structures other than energy conversion equipment may be included in this. So limited-scale system is typically created by people that join together to cooperatively install conversion systems and use solar energy. Electricity created is for consumption of members in the group and not for transfer or sale to a third party except for allowance of net meter. So what I had thought this was is that twenty contiguous acres means it has to be, you know, square and, you know, way to work. I'm doubting people would do it like five acres here and there, you know, and a lawn or something like that. But I thought, you know, you'd have three bigger tracks that would, or parcel off a twenty-acre piece for themselves and then join your systems, you know. It's kind of like cooperative, community cooperative.
What, what I could envision on that is like, uh, the housing development out here west of town. Uh, all the owners getting together and putting, that, that is what I envisioned, envisioned as a limited-scale solar.
Yeah, and that's, I think, yeah, so I don't think you put some number. We, we just know that the acreage would have to be contained in that twenty acres.
Okay.
And then whoever goes into that is fine. That's theirs. The only thing they get from that, they don't get a settlement to these third parties. It's, it's to that group and they can't, all they can say is, well, we, we net meter. We even, we put power back into the grid.
Into their system.
Yeah, into the wire system, we don't have to pay when we, when we get power from it. Or we get credit. Who's we?
Well, the owners, like the housing developer.
Yeah. Well, let's make it simple. You've got five homeowners together, three in this LCS system.
Okay.
And they've got it hooked to, to energy. They produce enough power, one month they produce enough power to cover their, cover themselves and that's it. But they had to get some coverage. So their net net. Next month, they overproduce. They're taking care of all their power needs and they push back a number of kilowatts to average. Members, you then ask you whether you've got a lot and you say, well, you're credited the cost of twenty kilowatts. And the next month, they're twenty kilowatts short. Again, they're net zero because they got that credit. So the back and forth of that is only in that regard, is that rate. We're selling, we're, you know.
We're, we're selling to the Southwest Power deal.
Yeah, or, yeah. Whoever is on the receiving end of their, their connection.
Okay.
So, and, and I guess that's the question is being, do we have everything in here because, I mean, or do we create some kind of miniature version of this?
I don't think we do. I, I really don't see why we would create a miniature version specifically for the limited scale.
So then we get to the, what, the other element being, I think, is set up for this. When you say, well, they're subject to, you know, part of the definitions, they're subject to Section Three, Section Five, or, you know, Section Three, eight. You can get details about what they've got to comply with, because some of them, you know, I think, sense to have and do. Like, do you, do they have to have a full-blown decommissioning plan? Do they have to have an inspection every few years?
Then, then I would, I would rather hold off on this particular portion of it until we have all of the regs written and then we can go through item by item and see what we need to take off for the limited scale.
I'm fine with that.
Okay, so I just wanted to keep you on the radar and say that's, that's the thing that's gotta be ironed out, so.
I mean, because personally on that, uh, I would still, on, on, on stuff like this with limited scale, I would still say, uh, that they would have to comply with the no battery storage. I don't, I don't think that needs to be in, in them. So, I mean, personal home, we can't, we can't regulate that. But for a bigger system, that where they would have some kind of a storage system, I don't think that that's a good deal. So I'd, I'd rather just wait until we get all of the regulations done and then we can go through and item by item and look and see whether that would, uh, apply to the limited scale. So, does that make sense?
It does. Okay. Well, and somewhat related to that, um, we're on ten thousand foot things. Well, I think that just keep, he's not working on it. Well, maybe we, we don't worry about this. I was just thinking about mechanically where we put this in the code, the existing code. I had seventeen. Which I think, because it looked like it was a, it's pretty short. There's like a minute, this is like minimum landscape requirements. I thought, I, we could put that section somewhere else and use that entry, right, so you don't.
Sure.
Right.
But I think, you know, Kate gave me, she said, what, there's, she gave me Article Thirty, which is when entering conversion systems, overlay districts.
So can I, can I ask a question? Why are we even addressing smaller scale like this at all? When we don't have anybody applying for anything like that? Can't that be a separate set of regulation, uh, twenty acres or less? Or do you think it needs to be in this?
I don't think that we need to write separate regulations for it. I think that we can include it right into here. And I, I really think this is a good idea with having the provisions applicable, applicable to the limited scale in here.
Okay.
Because that way, I don't wanna have to write in a whole another set of regulations or pick and choose out here. We can just pick and choose out of here what we need to have for the limited scale.
Yeah, and I think it's, the idea being is that you're not doing residential, you're just doing, that's right. Yeah.
All right, we're gonna halt for right now. Uh, since Scott's back, we're gonna entertain most of what is being said in matters of personal, not like personnel for a matter of fifteen minutes.
Uh, I'll leave, we go into executive session for the purposes of personnel matters and not like personnel for fifteen minutes starting at ten thirty-five. We're meeting, we're open fifteen minutes later at this location with the commission. Uh, the attorney, the attorney Scott is present, uh, for the purpose of discussing employee performance.
Okay. Read it, read it.
Location, city setback.
Right, read it. Uh, the read is, uh, city. Uh, we have it, I think, at three now. I, it's been suggested from others that we drop that.
Go back to a mile and a half.
Yeah, I like that idea. Four miles. I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I think we want, you know, we drive a Joe overboard, uh, as far as any setbacks or anything like that. So I would, I would say that'd be a good thing if we wanna drop that back.
Yeah.
Uh, I think that, uh...
What's your recommendation being?
One point five miles.
I just thought, there was a gentleman here, but you weren't here and looking at that.
Yeah, Mr. Ralzer?
Yeah.
And I've, you know, I've got feedback from other people. They thought that one was a little excessive.
Four hundred fifty.
I don't think, I don't think Nick had a, uh, told him having a distance, but he just thought the three was a little bit too much.
Yeah, I'm fine with the one, or one or one point five.
Yeah. I mean, the, there again, like you say.
Part of the two, you know, is, is considering the cities that are involved in this and how much they've grown over the last twenty years. Will they grow into that one point one mile radius to be able to grow, that's the whole thing.
And that was Nick's point as far as the deal.
I'm fine with the one.
You said there, if, if you look probably to the deal, how much it has grown, blah, blah, blah. See, Butler had two, distance from city limits, Butler had two miles except for islands. Douglas has none, Timman has none.
Yeah, I'm fine with the one mile.
Yeah.
This is, yeah, I recommend that too.
Okay, um, what else are you gonna add there just to get my language straight? It's like, set it up so that the, you know, comprehensive plan had highway tiers in, basically, they called them suburban and highway tiers on the future land use map. But this was a, a plot. It said no projects within those areas. It basically is not here, but Highway seventy-five for most part, four sixty-three. Yeah, but that is, I mean, we're gonna be well within that for sixty-three because it's-
Yep.
Probably a hundred miles or over.
Yeah, so I, I guess I'm trying to make sure I, since I'm not familiar with that as, like it should be. It's just, if we go to a mile in the city, in the city, being the edge, um, that should probably be in place of those land use tiers, right? Because I think, remembering right, that was probably just a three-mile limit that they were embracing for a lot of the places. And that land use map. And the whole point here being is that you're, you're, you're trying to comply with your own planning documents in some respects.
Right.
Meaning, that, here's, here's areas where we think this kind of development's gonna hurt.
Right.
And I kind of said, well, you said that's the place where you're, where you're restricted development and you're restricted development if you can't, you don't want a solar facility right next to the highway, so, perhaps. But that's the kind of question for this, so. You guys, your intent here is that the city is a mile and work at everything else to try to make sense. Okay? And that's my job is to make sense of that. I didn't know if you had, if you had feeling about or anything like that, you know, outside of city highway areas or anything like that. The highways, yeah, I don't have a problem with going a little further from the highways, but, um...
You're saying our, our comprehensive plan states that already?
Well, it's, it, it creates zones, uh, that's what that is. Burden and highway tiers, the future land, for basic incentives in some respects. These areas are limited control. I mean, you could, if you're outside of those zones, you probably, you know, kind of free rein.
And what is the zone for the cities?
Um, that's suburban tier.
And what is that? Is there a, is there a, a distance?
I think it's actually just mapped out. I'll, I can find it.
What I'm kind of looking at here on the comprehensive plan, I don't really see that it's spelled out as far as the distance in miles. Uh, it's referring to the map, which-
Yeah.
It's got a nice little red area around it, but it really doesn't spell out anything distance-wise.
Yeah, I thought I'd looked at that and it was, it was probably a three-mile.
What argument?
Uh, very, very-
Say that one more time?
I thought it was a three-mile concept, because that's the concept of zoning concept, which is the, the city has, each city has three, you know, like to have a three-mile limit. Meaning they can control or cooperatively control the tenant's land in that area outside of that.
But we don't have that here.
No. But you do have a land use map. You said, we're planning for, you know, let's say, you have this area where they're gonna-
Right, and where we got that three miles from was other regulation where it's like one to one point five. We doubled it that time. But in retrospect, I think the one mile is more than enough based on, you know, the growth of the city.
So I need to kind of reverse that and say, this is the rule rather than, you know.
Yeah, I, listen, I don't-
Yeah. Article Three, Section Three.
Under comprehensive plan?
Zoning regulations.
Yes, I do.
All right, well, we were talking about comprehensive plan, which like I said, I do not see anything in there. Look what we were just talking about, existing land use matters, where it actually gives a distance.
Yeah, and I think that's just because they say, look at the map.
Yeah, but which the map doesn't really tell you a whole heck of a lot. Just go show some, some red lines around the cities and that's all.
So you follow your official map, you probably have a real map, a line drawn map on your computer, but you'd be able to map all these distances, or they have it in the GIS system.
Yeah.
So, but I, I think that's, that is enough for me to make that choice.
Okay.
We do that.
All right.
I think that's what I got for now, what I can say for now.
Okay, Carrie, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. Come on up. And I owe you an apology. I did not give the information to you like I said I would. I left that next morning and I was, I was in the air and I went, oh, Merrill's not gonna come out.
Well, I, I talked with all the senators' offices and nobody knew anything about it or anything that had been introduced. Do you have the federal legislative?
They do, they do now. Right, Mark.
And who in his office, do you guys know?
Yeah, uh, you have me at the wood school here, uh-
Ty Whitmer.
Taylor.
Or Tal, Tal.
Okay.
Taylor Whitmer is his, uh, no, I'm sorry, Tal is in Tracy Mann's office.
Uh, Roger Marshall just changed his, uh, new assistant.
I'll get his name, man.
It used to be Bueller.
Yeah, he's good friends with the sheriff.
So what is the federal regulation though that you-
The federal-
Senator Marshall is going to try and do with that? That's what, there's something else that has some interest in him as well, and I couldn't even speak to that when I was-
So the legislation that has been written is allowing the federal government to reimburse Jackson County or any county that has lost twenty percent of its ground into a USA trust. This legislation would reimburse us- this legislation would reimburse us, um, for those lost acres, to take care of our tax base, help with our, our taxes.
Do you know who wrote it?
Well, yeah, our, our lobbyist wrote it, and it will be, at this point, they're going to introduce it in January, when the legislature comes back in, um... Let me, I'll take a look here, I'll wait back to get you. Okay, so... But I can get you the information, I'm just not pulling it up right here, I haven't...
That would be great, same.
Taylor is his name, he works for Roger Marshall, he's his chief of staff, uh, Tel is Tracy Mann's chief of staff, Tel is on board with this, um, and so, anybody who can encourage them, and again, I'm surprised that, you, you met with Kerry? Marianne?
Um, Kerry, we did not, but we met with his help aide, who didn't know anything about it, and they're all changing, um, all offices.
Maybe, maybe he's the new guy, because I just had a conversation with this guy in Washington in his office. That's disappointing that they didn't know that, or they didn't...
And they didn't act, one of them, maybe you know something, but didn't act like it was going, for sure had not been introduced, and did not know that it would be introduced, so, that was Marshall, that was Marianne's office, Marshall's office didn't know anything about it.
Yeah.
I guess I was just a week for traction on that, the last thing that the hospital wants to do is work at making any of the community upset by, um, adding on any sales tax, who many wants that, I mean, we're very sort of on that, but is there an opportunity for the hospital to have a separate line item, or if you can go beyond separately, if, um, legislation is worked through with Francis Arcamp, do you agree?
We've got also a thousand, who's mostly here, and as well as Sean, we'll talk to, a couple of locals that you might want to talk to as well, so it will have...
Is it the most we would look at, would be a quarter of a percent, and so I just didn't know if that would be separate from the counties?
The county, the county has decided not to pursue any sales tax.
Oh, I hadn't heard that.
Yeah, correct, I mean, that's a, that was the general consensus here, we...
The general consensus from the people, the week I took, the, the people aren't, they don't want, they don't want any of that encouraged.
And the, the general consensus was amongst us, is that we're just gonna leave it for you, do not...
Okay, so I need to figure that out for myself.
Yeah, our, our analysis was, is just, you know, there's no authority for us alone who were valid measures directly to impose a tax of benefits, obviously, it would have to be a special legislative action by the Kansas legislature to make that happen, and we can't, and, and right now, that's, you're saying is that the, the public would not be supportive of...
Well, I don't, the public wasn't in favor of us doing, okay?
Now, they may bend over backwards, if they find out it's just for you, or for your hospital.
If you look at the two counties up north, who just had a ballot, a major to extend their sales tax for, uh, Nehaw Brown and, uh, Berry'sville, I believe it was, and they passed, so...
I have a question, okay, last week's meeting, the, the minutes indicated, or in the paper, that you were waiting for the hospital to get back to you about this, so it's kinda just up in the air, it didn't indicate a decision had been made over that.
Well, it wasn't, it was just a general consensus, that was like two or three weeks ago, that we were not going to go after a sales tax, that, and, and I stated that I'd assume just, you know, leave it up to you guys, let you have it, uh...
So we don't have to go involve the county commissioners or secret...
I think it would, would it come through, through us as a conduit?
I mean, they have the capacity, probably.
Yeah, it would come to us, and then we would, you know, just distribute them to you.
Sure, but, yeah, you have, I mean, that's the way the setup usually is.
But we, it would be a county tax, because obviously you all take in a lot more than any of the cities do, so it would be a county tax.
Well, yes.
County-wide, I don't know whether you can separate it out, because typically, if the county puts a sales tax on, the incorporated city gets a portion of, um, but, there may be a way that you can channel that, so that all, twenty-five percent, or, uh, forty percent would all come directly back to you, I don't know either.
That's, yeah, and that's why the legislation is so important, is that, I mean, technically, they can do pretty much whatever they want to write on that, meaning, I don't, you know, short of...
Even they could do that.
The legislation could say, you know, you, you have, you know, county has the right to impose a one, two, five percent sales tax on the county general, just, all to go to the hospital, and, you know, and no other purposes, no other payments to the county, county can't piggyback its own percentage on that, or whatever, and all that goes to you, to you guys, and that's, because of this legislation, they can do that.
But that would get us out of that earmark, that we're only one of five in the whole state of Kansas, that don't get any county or city funded, and that's what we're going to pay them for, we need that.
Yeah, and it, it would probably be, you know, Francis Arcamp would be a good one to reach out to, um, he had, he can put you in contact with their legal staff who does this for them, and possibly figure out a way to do it, and then we would, we would just collect it and move it, put it on...
And they can look at the, the statutes that set up the sales tax, things, the first two are like city can, like county can, and the rest of them are, Marshall County can oppose twenty-five percent, you know, point two five percent sales tax, Johnson County, well, there's, there's specific counties in there, just, you know, dead center teams of those, nobody else.
I would contact your CEOs and some of that, and send it up, because they would have, they'd have...
I've heard that you guys work, um...
Sure. They have all the structure already in place, and we have a good relationship with them anyway, and, uh, yeah, I, Francis would be a great one, and the other two are gonna get their feet wet here in a few weeks, so, I would, I'd be then too.
You might, you might, when you reach out to your full CEO, you might find out if they are getting the full percentage, whatever it is that they have, or if they have to distribute it amongst the, the incorporated cities in their county, I don't know, because I, I would just assume if you're gonna do it, see you get the whole, uh, quarter percent, if that's what you're going after, and go, go that way.
But I still think it's gonna have to be introduced in twenty-five.
Yes.
Special election, fall of twenty-five, and then it would go into effect if it passed in twenty-six.
Yeah, so you're still looking at a little timeline, but you're, you know, I'd just assume you get it done sooner or later.
There may be two precincts, I mean, this is, I know, my direction of the deal, Southwest, that, uh, voting has a sales, a property tax, so that may be...
Well, that's property tax, not sales tax, so...
You don't think that'll be exempt, though, because they are separate...
Are there any sales going on there?
I don't know.
I don't think so, so...
You don't think there's any, okay.
It's not a business, it's a...
Yeah.
Unless, unless it's in Stevens, though, but they can go in those, so...
No, no, that's...
Is that your question?
We have Stevensville.
There you go, so, I mean, yeah, I, I just assume you guys go for it and get it done, and, like I said, sooner the better, I get your, get your feet wet and start talking, Francis, start talking to the other two, and go from there.
So if we talk to these people, we can say, we have your support?
Oh, you've got my support.
Yeah. I spent eleven years on the hospital board, yes, absolutely. Kerry, is your email, C Roberts?
No.
No, that's not it.
Um, it's, uh, karrid, C-A-R-R-I-D dot L-U-T-C.
Blue's, I'm sorry.
That's all right, there's another Kerry Roberts, I'm sorry, at R-H-R-J-C dot O-N.
I'll send you, Taylor's, I think it's pronounced Swetjoy, that's his name, um, there's been several meetings here recently, that Robbins, our lobbyist has had, um, I believe they're all on board with him, I'm surprised that, that that's, was a month ago, that you met with?
It was, uh, right after the election, so it hasn't been a month ago.
That you met with him?
Marshall.
Yeah, I'm surprised.
A little disappointed in that.
Part of the reason, and, and I'm, I'm not defending, I'm just, I wonder, part of the reason they want Marshall's office to be the one to introduce it, and then everybody else will come on board and just support, but I know he's had at least two meetings with each of the other two, um...
There's a lot going on, I think Trump was in, uh, just...
You could, uh, also reach out to Tel Whitmer, who is Tracy Mann's, you can go to Tel...
I talked with Mann one on one, I know his appearance, but not confidentially, um, and Mann had, had only heard of that either, so, he said, that's an interesting concept, so, I'm just, was...
I walked across the Capitol grounds with him, and explained it to him.
I know that you're a lot, a lot to the story, and help here is just one in his team.
And maybe Tel is just ready for, I mean, to let him know that there is some work, um, but, um, I guess what I was gonna say is, if this legislation can go through in twenty-five, and we would start getting something in twenty-six out of it, it would give us the option, or give you the option, to not have to have the sales tax.
Yeah, it would be an interaction all the way around.
I would agree, because I think we could, out of that funding, we could fund you with what you needed to comply, or to, to take care of it, so that's...
To disguise them.
No, no.
Why, I didn't hear that.
We get help.
Okay, well, we appreciate that.
I mean, I think the, the, the first peo, first group of people that we want to help is the taxpayer, to reduce property taxes by every one, so, if we can reduce property taxes, I see several things happening, when you reduce property taxes, you have people who want to move into your county, now you're increasing revenue, you have businesses that want to move into your county, now you're increasing revenue, um, so, there's a lot of good things that can come from this, from your side of things, though, if you can write letters to those offices, and talk to Taylor, and say, we're having to look at a sales tax to support our hospital, but if this legislation went through, we would have, that would be...
I tried.
I know you did, I know you did.
And just, uh, nine stairs, and so, anyways, that...
But you didn't, you didn't meet with anybody from Roger's office, correct? Was it...
Roger Marshall's office, his help aide, he's new, but he just came over...
He wouldn't know anything about it.
That's who they usually meet with.
Right, he wouldn't know anything about this legislation, because I think it, it was, uh, his, his director of, left and went to another job, and so this Taylor just took over his position, so his director...
Well, he said, whatever, he said, if you can follow up, or you can find out who he did, and they offer this again, and...
Yeah, I will, I will forward this to you.
And I, I wanted to say something about what you said about lowering the property tax, just, we want to hopefully get this legislation passed to lower the property taxes, but, uh, in, in the meeting across the hall several months ago with the ORN, ORN budget, uh, it was pointed out that we have the highest mill levy of the surrounding counties, we have this, we have that, blah, 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 yes, we do, we certainly do, but, what the, what's not taken into account is the fact that the mill levy really doesn't matter, ma, it, mill levy doesn't matter, what matters is the valuation for the milk, what one mill equals, and also the fact that the surrounding counties that I compared us to, because I, I've got a spreadsheet, and I did, the surrounding counties that I compared us to also have townships, so their county mill levy is low, but they have townships on top of that, and their valuations are so much higher than ours, it's not funny, so, for the, for the counties of Jackson, Pot, Nehaw, Brown, and Abson, we sit third with what our property taxes are, which we're right in the middle, so we're not the highest ground, not the lowest ground, but hopefully we can get it a little lower if we get this legislation, I think that's a very important thing for people to understand, is, we're not the highest ground, so, you know, we want to do what we can do to help you, and, and give the property tax a week to, of this legislation, so, all right? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You bet, good luck. Todd, do you have anything else?
I don't know if you have that.
Okay, I think Scott's gonna be back here about eleven thirty, so we've got some, we've got some, yeah, we can take, uh, fifteen of them, recess to, you know, you gotta do, I'll sign these.
It is!
It's been a last thirty days.
Can I help that sort of board?
Right.
What can they even ask for, yes?
I'll come with it, I'm going with it.
And then I'll also protect it from that.
Yeah.
Uh, I'm happy, I fact just found it. I think Cory may have set one. I'm serious, I'm talking, before back session.
You said it's...
I, I can't, it was hired to do that.
Yeah.
They were supposed to be glad Pop was new, she was...
Christie and, uh...
Supposed to be, yeah, she didn't... Reserving, it's a choice, so, somebody took it out, must have been, put it in the face of observing, so, and she said she's never heard of that, because... She said it was common, they could be more with dash, there was, the hose, and then the sunbead, and, and, just, he, he said that the sun should... I'm still...
Yeah, I don't have some reason for Aaron to run hell, just work. Follow that. Your schedule's cold, I think.
My holidays, it's cold right now.
Oh, I see, I see. Tell them what you're doing. I don't know, I don't really mention, she has more specialty with doctors, just, they treat the syndrome at this point in time, and the focus there is, the cause. So we don't, uh, she's, she's, some days, she didn't go with us to Texas, her daughter, decided, she can't go to travel, so... She, she's done a lot to it, right? I mean, she packed one, packed her home, so they're always down there. That's what it looked like, you're just supposed to be there.
It's, it's cold.
Yeah, well, overcast and breezy, for a, for a...
Yeah.
Yeah, got old, it's cold. Here's that picture I took of, it's called The Peasant. They block it, Nelson Artis, you go out and take a picture, you can't, it won't, there's something in there that won't allow you to copy it. All their pictures, it's weird.
With paintings?
There's some kind of device they can use that they had at Buffett somehow. An egg eye can see it, but when you go to take a picture.
But it's like, is it covering them with paint or anything?
No, there's a block, there's a picture, there's some film or a screen or glass. I got that, when I got back out, I tell them, put Mark way down there this past weekend or so.
Yeah.
I'd been there a year or two prior. I came home, I thought, I'm gonna see this and that and this picture, because I mesmerized, you just look, holy cow. You know, I'm not our guy, but when I see something like that, I was just stuck to it. Then I thought, okay, I have a picture of it. And they've, they've got devices in there. Rather interesting. I, and it, it does cost anything, it's free.
Yeah, I've been there.
Uh, it's.
I've been a lot of them in there.
Oh, same with me, you know? Farm boys don't go to museums, you know? Mom and dad don't take farm boys to see museums back in my day. We're lucky to go to Wild Space. I love farm. Room, we can do that till twelve, so if people would just work through.
Sure.
Do you take that?
Don't have those over there anymore.
Yeah, they're, they're on a lot of those.
I probably close them.
Well, they did close.
Over here?
We had Chinese Saturday night. Well, was it closed?
What, Chinese place? I think so.
Chinese Saturday night, well. I didn't know that, late afternoon. Are they open on Mondays? I don't.
I think they're closed.
That's the one they're closed.
Mondays, they open on Sundays.
Okay.
It's good food.
Yeah, definitely.
Of course, I don't know how long you go throughout here. I was very partial to the Old China Inn. I did go to that.
Didn't go to Peter?
Yeah, oh, yeah. Nine one. One of the very first ones.
Yeah, O G.
The Ingetures. And the two brothers, one of them married in Galfo, Atchison County around that, and his nephew was one of our neighbors. My dad, growing up on farm, would hate the fishnails, it's a delicacy. I thought, what are you doing that for? I mean, but he, you know, we'd go fish ourselves, have a bunch of catfish, and they love catfish fishes. But that was totally around as a delicacy, as sometime, I've never had it, but, you know. Yeah, I knew that family, the yeast, and in fact, his daughter, granddaughter, daughter granddaughter, is one of two Indo-Domestic's in the U. So. Dick's retirement was the night. Yeah, he and Jen Rollins will be here in the courthouse, I think two to four on the nineteenth. Just an open door, and of course, probably a little get together sort of person, I guess. Todd, you can't stay there for a month, I'm sorry, I didn't ask you. But you're available for a little while.
Yeah, should do any news?
Yeah. Shouldn't, shouldn't be a problem. Well, a ranger?
Yeah.
Well, a forest ranger. Oh, I see. Are they here? Was it smaller? They're, they're, they're big size.
Yeah.
You either have, you know, barely have the same root as a sand tree, but it's higher. But it's higher. You don't make a market for something there. Like a forest ranger. A ranger. A ranger, a razer. My kids are moving, tell me. If there's something you need to do, you need to go do it. Think of, don't worry about it, just imagine that.
Okay.
Huh? There you go, we're doing five. Once a while. Personally, I don't know, I work.
Yeah.
And I hope that.
I got a nice car.
I don't.
Personally, myself, razors, I think I did, just went out driving down roads every Sunday and.
Yeah.
Bringing air until my hands are.
Whoa.
But I just, you know, I don't get that.
Yeah.
I, you can be my side by side.
Yeah.
Or get an arm, that's it. To each his own.
Yeah. Well, we've got a lot of crazy trails down there in the western, I should say.
Sure.
Maybe some. Or I need one. But. I don't like them, I don't think of them. I don't think they're like.
Do you need to take that?
No, I don't like them. Like off the boat, you're about the same level, I don't know. That's like.
And I got those.
Yeah. I got into eighties and go.
Play off, play business.
That's what it is.
No, I know.
You play tennis a lot too, but. Can't move like this. Yeah, eight, but. There he does. You know why James keep this?
No, the other side, the case, others.
It was already got stuff on. The melody of life, shop break. Just wondering. Never make spirit as you're portioned. You do, but figure out, let you have.
Yeah.
Look at that, let you back to table. Hey, what do you guys want?
What?
Is it this week or next?
This week.
Is it? What is it? Uh, Wednesday, Thursday?
Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
Oh, it's Sunday, Monday, okay.
Yeah, well, I'm leaving at night, I have to pick this up close.
Okay.
Here's the post.
She said anything more about our streets?
No.
I didn't want her to.
Yeah, you want her to just play with that chair from some of us around town.
Yeah, because kids, they slow down, but.
Yeah.
Taking the kids to school, and, I mean. See Johnny, Abby, seeing a nice award.
Yeah.
Managing. That's my little boss, teaching.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, we're gonna do this. We gave them those. Now, it was freezing here. Marshall right there.
Short sleep shirt.
That is freezing.
Do you have the heat on?
I know, we got a crack, I know, I'll freeze that.
Is that one on?
That's probably those not on. That one was, he had air conditioning. Yeah, it's putting out hot air. Going to leave a standing order with Jerry.
Yeah.
As well, Friday, turn the heat on everything here, and so by Monday, it's warm.
You know, you always got one thing to look forward to, it's gonna get worse.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Saw a news fight with Tyson and Portis close, they're playing.
Really?
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah.
For good news or?
I don't know, somebody will probably buy it, but.
Hmm, that's interesting.
That's gonna really hurt.
Didn't they just pose another plant somewhere? A processing plant somewhere?
They, I was down there, we had our, we just had our store like two years. They transferred a whole slug of people out to Garden City. Garden City or the odd one of those. And, I mean, the towns, this was like devastated for a couple of years.
Yeah.
Population. I don't know. The, uh, workforce setting will be involved with that soon. And did you tell me the capital was purchased?
That's what I had heard, uh, verified a little before town, so a little bit of friends at work there said that somebody had purchased it, so I don't have to go find out.
Because a lot of those folks, I was tracking that, a lot of them were going in back into Topeka, now hiring some other folks there at that one final twenty-four. Hey, Tom, what will be the next step on regulations that you'll bring to us?
Well, uh, these changes will be incorporated, I think, sort of call up the, it's probably whether or not we have been settled on the pilot concept before we send it down to the main commission.
I think we send it on down without the pilot, we'll, we'll continue to work on it.
Yeah, you're, you guys are going to, the pilot right there. So, I'll incorporate these things, and I'll have a version for, and, pretty much at the end, I think you probably have to figure out the, the limited, the limited site people were into with that, and then there was probably some other things, and, uh, I don't know, whatever I remember off the end looking at is, you know, cost, but we manually assess for, you know, for speculative guide for us, you know, you have a specific structure, then expect for on, or on for the.
Oversees the project before us, our eyes.
Yeah, and then you, you use the guy, capital, it's even a shame.
But I think we could, so, I'm hearing what you're saying, we're pretty close, and we could go ahead and send these to the next, um, thing.
Yeah, we, well, it's, you know, you guys are.
I just think of them all together.
Have what?
I just think of the whole thing all together before we send it.
That's what I was talking about.
Yeah, I'll, I'll give you work.
People have it all together.
Yeah, we're really.
But then do we want to go over?
We'll handle the pilot, we'll handle the.
But then, we need to go, before we send it, we need to go over what we're going to require for the limited solar out of the whole.
Yeah, that's what you were saying, we go over that, or finish that up, and then it'd be ready to go.
Okay.
I don't know, but, you know, you guys had, did you ever find a company that had, can you say?
Ever bring it back from?
Not working. Is there maybe, uh, there was a suggestion that someone gave you about another person, or, or that, I think it was, you guys wanted to know about technical details about, about the panel itself, right?
Well, the, uh, makeup of the product is also something that we, we've seen this, we've seen that, we have a lot. It actually is, the keeper, yes, is aluminum, it's silver, it's glass.
Here's.
Maybe they'll come in and hold it.
Yeah. Engineer, they're, they're, they're all engineers, so.
Yeah. Yeah, so if you want to keep that and just make a fire, it's, it's.
Okay.
I'll reach out and can, I've got all my notes in my brief. So.
Well, it's football season, I tracked, you say.
I gave up on the playoff system a couple of weeks ago, but they go to a nice little board, or a hole somewhere, probably in Texas. That's a root for hogs, I don't know, you're trying to. Hey, how are you?
Good. And if y'all need me today or not.
I do.
If I, soon you saw my email.
Yeah, I did.
You?
Well, was, there was two, there was renewal, she's not the renewal.
Kevin.
Okay, yeah.
How's that being taken care of, did you guys send the notes?
We're waiting to hear back from our books office to see if that was sent.
We knew that, no.
I know, and you go back and send it, or remind you to send it.
And I sent the group back on, then on, advised, then on October first, so it's just bad, I guess.
And you, you said Aaron had no way of checking Tara?
She was trying to, but I don't, I don't know.
And you, have you talked to her this morning since the, the first time? Why don't you call up and just see if she found anything?
At minimum, send it today, it's the last three days, however, I rewrite the contract, and those say it's required to be written.
It does say what?
It doesn't require to be written, if it's, at least how I write it, I'll have him read it, too.
Yeah, and Todd, you could, if you've got a copy of that, you could just forward that on, just in email.
Yeah, I got a copy, you're saying.
We might have to update it, because it does say thirty days, and we just can't update it.
Yeah, that, that does say thirty days, so.
It's what the notice says, but I rewrite the contract.
It doesn't say thirty day notice.
It says for cause, it happens, has to be written, that's saying that the renewal has to be written, I just hope you didn't have it.
Yeah.
Near, because it says that you're wrong.
Yeah, we could just plan to not renew this contract.
I thought you said you.
I thought, oh, I thought they had that conversation.
No, yeah. Text, uh, he has a verbal issue.
Yes, I thought so.
Especially, so we didn't.
Yes.
Yeah.
I, so, it hasn't been sent, it's been, that, yeah, we may get, um, I don't know.
Um.
Anything?
You remember, did we do an action on, did you get a good action on that, 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 you mean, where you said?
If, if we did, I, I'd have to go back and look.
I'd have to go back and look.
Two minutes, I don't recall, um, I don't recall doing that, I just know that we had a conversation with the chairman, he said this is.
Yeah.
More than we were having a, yeah, at least twice, we talked about not renewing this contract.
I think that qualifies under the, me and other person, like, can't be hired, hired from month to month. I don't know, Kevin, commissioners.
He works for us, not, yeah, he's in contract with us.
I thought, okay, so I.